And Mr. Cortez are not currently here.
Is Mr. Alon?
So did you prepare?
Yeah.
The time is six fifteen, the special session is back in order. I also at this time will be adjourning the special meeting.
Okay.
It's just twenty years, not going to be older than that.
No.
Eighty-two, he was eighty-two.
That's what I thought.
He made it back.
Oh, that's Easter when this happens.
Oh, yeah. Wow.
The Grim Reaper.
It is seven o'clock. If you join us, please with the, for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Leely, let's see who's here.
Councilmember Davis.
Here.
Councilmember Cortez. Councilmember DeRozier.
Here.
Mayor Johnson.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Bowman.
Yes.
Councilmember McCoy.
Here.
And Councilmember Farrar.
Here.
The clerk is present. That concludes the roll.
Thank you. Well, Ms. Leely, we'll come back to you and ask, ask for you to perform the oath of office for Ms. Warren.
It's a pleasure, sir.
Thank you. Forward just a tad so that you're, there you are. So, so that you're on the, on the screen. There you are.
Right. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Victoria Farrar.
Do solemnly affirm or swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I am a citizen of the United States.
That I'm a citizen of the United States.
And of the state of Washington.
And of the state of Washington.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of the state of Washington.
Of the state of Washington.
And will, to the best of my judgment.
Will, with the best of my judgment.
Faithfully and impartially.
Faithfully and impartially.
Perform all duties of council member for the city of battleground.
Perform all duties of a council member for the city of battleground.
County of Clark.
County of Clark.
And state of Washington.
And state of Washington.
As such duties are prescribed by law.
As such duties are prescribed by law.
We'll, we'll go ahead and take, take five minutes so that we can, you can have some pictures shot if you'd like. And we'll step aside so that we won't be in those pictures with you. And May I have a motion to excuse Councilmember Cortez, if I may? Thank you, sir.
Second.
Thank you, sir. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Moving on. Councilmember reports. Oh, yep. Let me, I skipped one. Are there any changes needed to be made to the agenda?
Move to approve.
Thank you. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Councilmember reports.
Mr. Mayor, I do. I'm on the Clark County Mosquito Control Committee. And we, like everybody else, we were working on our budget. And so we came up with a budget. It was a very bad year for mosquitoes, if you didn't already know it. And so a lot of costs with everything else has gone up. So the budget is 1.69 million this year.
Wow.
Yeah. It's a, it's an expensive process with chemicals and sprays and kits and insurance, gas, have to keep going out in spring. So, next meeting is in February. That will be posted.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I will say, on, on my behalf, I had a wonderful time Friday night at the Christmas event. Ms. Eiderholm, what, what, what do you think the number was? Of people? That's pretty exact. Well, I had a wonderful time. Santa Claus, as always, was wonderful. Mrs. Claus was wonderful. And we appreciate everyone that came out and look forward to it again next year. Thank you. We will go ahead, if we may, at this point, reappoint some folks and appoint some folks. We have one salary commission position up and several parks and community engagement advisory board positions expiring. Salary Commission is a three-member volunteer board that meets annually to review and determine the salaries and benefits provided by the city to its elected officials. The PACE Board meets monthly and is comprised of volunteers who actively encourage community participation in public parks and recreation. The board serves in an advisory capacity to the council, providing guidance on the development, operations of parks, playgrounds, and recreational facilities. So we'll start with the Salary Commission. Ms. Taylor, I see you're here. Thanks for coming. Would, would you like to say something or just kind of, you're gonna take a pass? Council, may I have a motion then to reappoint Ms. Taylor to the Salary Com- Salary Commission Position Number Two?
I move to approve the reappointment of Ms. Over.
Thank you.
To be specific, of Ms. Taylor to Salary Commission Position Number Two.
Thank you.
As presented.
And a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Welcome aboard. Ms. Rosenberg, is Ms. Rosenberg here? I don't think I saw her. No, I didn't. Position Number Two, currently held by Ms. Rosenberg, is set to expire this year. I request the council's approval for the reappointment of Ms. Rosenberg to the advisory board, expiring the 31st of December of 2026. Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none. The reappointment of Ms. Levitt. There you are. Always a pleasure. The term for Position Number Seven, currently held by Ms. Levitt, is to expire this year again. I request council's approval for the reappointment of Ms. Levitt to the advisory board, Position Number Seven, expiring the 31st of December of 26.
So moved.
Thank you, sir.
Second.
Thank you, sir. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none. The appointment of Ms. Olson, I do see Ms. Olson here. The term for PACE Advisory Board Position Number Three, currently held by Ms., can't ever pronounce her name, Ynderosis. Is set to expire this year. I would like to express the gratitude of the city to Ms. Ynderosis, who has decided not to request reappointment. She has served on the PACE Board since November of 2019. Thank you, Michelle, for your time and your years of dedication. I do request council's approval for the appointment of Cindy Olson to Position Number Three. Term beginning on the first day of January 24 and expiring on the 31st of December of 26.
So moved.
Thank you, sir.
Second.
Thank you, ma'am. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Welcome aboard. It's a pleasure to have you, all three of you. Moving on. New employee introduction. We're going on to Mr. Herzig.
Evening, Council. I'm going to introduce Cy Hicks. He's our new construction inspector. He's originally from Tumwater, Washington. He received his high school diploma from Tumwater High School. He has a Bachelor of Arts from the College of Idaho. His previous work experience includes materials testing, road inspection, quantity and quality assurance for construction sites. He's a big fan of all Seattle-based sports teams, including the Mariners, Seahawks, and Kraken. And he considers himself an outdoorsman and likes fishing.
The microphone is yours, sir.
Nice to meet all you guys. Happy to be working here and excited to serve the community.
It's a pleasure to have you, Mr. Hicks. We, we wish you the best. Yes, sir. See you tomorrow at work. Moving on. Ms. Erdman.
Thank you, Mayor Johnson. Next on the list, we have the state legislative agenda, the 2024 draft in front of you. Also, on Zoom, we have Mr. Wies and Ms. Vaughn to go through what we've presented. And then I can also turn it over if anybody on the legislative committee would like to chime in as well. So.
Pleasure to have you too.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Nice to see you. And congratulations and welcome to Councilmember Farrar.
Thank you.
So the Legislative Committee has been working with us and Ms. Erdman. And for the last several months, we've come up with this list. Just a quick reminder, it is the 60-day short session. So it's the supplemental budget year. We're not anticipating particularly on the transportation side of the state budget. Much opportunity, all in transportation. Capital budget and operating budget do look, look healthy. So we think it's a good time to be putting forward additional budget requests that the city, you know, has a priority for. So we think it's a good time to be putting forward additional budget requests that the city, you know, has a priority for. It's gonna be, you know, 60 days goes very, very quickly. So it's gonna be a scramble to really get many bills through. And then I guess I would say the other additional dynamic, it's an election year next year, so legislators are gonna be interested in getting out on time if they can. And then the fact that there are several initiatives that are to the legislature that are likely to make the ballot, have the signatures to make the ballot is really gonna change the dynamic. The one that has been covered in the press so far has to do with repealing the Climate Commitment Act. The reason I bring this up is it really, there's five others that have the potential to also make the ballot. If the legislature doesn't act on those, assuming, assuming they get the sufficient signatures. The legislature has this session to either act on them or put them in front of the voters for the voters to decide what to do. Alternatively, the legislature can put an alternative on the ballot and the voters can then vote for either option. Because the topics are items like vehicular pursuit, the capital gains tax, Climate Commitment Act. They're pretty heavy-duty topics that are very dear for the majority. And I think they're gonna have to put some pretty significant time and effort into thinking about what their strategy is to keep, you know, from their mind, keep protecting some of these priority issues that they passed in the last few years. So, I think that has the potential to really slow things down and maybe dominate some of the limited time that they'll have on their agenda to move bills. So, should be a pretty, pretty light session in terms of playing defense and having to worry about major issues coming our way. So, the items that you have on the draft agenda in front of you, like I said, we've, we worked through with staff in the Legislative Committee. We're asking for, or proposing that we ask for another half a million dollars.
I, I'm sorry, I asked Ms. Erdman to put the agenda up so we could see it.
Oh yes, yes. Sorry, if I'm going too fast, I should have said at the beginning as well, that feel free to interrupt if you have questions. We can't necessarily see, but I can hear you.
And you're back on. Good, yes, thank you.
Okay, there we go. Um, so there will be capital budget resources available, as I mentioned before. The first item here, we're suggesting requesting half a million dollars in the capital budget for design of the downtown revitalization project. As many of you remember, last year we received $375,000 to complete a study for options, so this is really that next step. We've talked with your delegation about this, actually most of these items, and there is support and willingness to put forward if these really are your priorities. The second item there is also capital budget request for $300,000 for a good amount of work at the senior center. And recognizing that there is work that needs to be done, both with the kitchen, the bathrooms, flooring, windows, those types of items. And the idea here with both of these two capital budget requests is perhaps we don't end up with both. But both of them are solid projects and in giving our delegation a couple of options, I think they'll really appreciate. And who knows, we could end up with both of them at the end of, of session. The next item, the city document management system, is an operating budget request. It's for just a little bit over half a million dollars. And this would really be a complete document management system. It would help not only with just generally keeping and storing documents across the city, but also with your public records request. This is a pretty heavy request, but some of the thinking here, that's for the complete purchase. Some of the, you know, question, thinking here is that we potentially could scale this down if there's the possibility that we even get part of the request funded. We could do part of the city's documents and not all of them, and come back in the future. This also, there's a connection here. You know, we hear the city and cities in general asking the legislature for help with the Public Records Act. The legislature's been really reticent to provide any of that. And so this is taking a slightly different tact of, you know, you're asking us to, to comply with public records. Help us with some resources to make that compliance easier. Trying to fly within wind, whether against, rather than against it, so to speak. And then the next item came out of a conversation directly with Senator Rivers, who was at a meeting with potentially some of you, I knew staff were there, I can't remember if I heard that councilmembers were there, but, but maybe that was the case. With battleground healthcare, the fact that they have some debt still left on their new facility. And just how important that facility is for the entire community, asking for $400,000 in the capital budget to pay off that facility. And this really would be, our understanding at this point is that the city would be taking the lead for preparing and putting forward that request. We know Senator Rivers is willing to put it forward and ask for those dollars. Given her position as one of the capital budget negotiators. I think it's pretty smart to have a, you know, a few of these. You're seeing more capital budget requests than we have had in the past on the legislative agenda, or proposed legislative agenda. Down, a little bit further down on the document, we also again mention, as we typically do, support for the Association of Washington Cities. And support, support for the Clark County Transportation Alliance. And I think many of you know that we don't get too many questions from legislators about this. These are regional statewide priorities that it's, we're including on there just to show shows statewide and regional support for our partners. So, I can talk a little bit about process maybe, about next steps for how we're going forward in the session. But let me pause there and make sure there's no questions. Or if you wanna take action on the agenda now too, that would be fine. However you want to proceed.
We, we do have one question. Mr. McCoy, sir.
Yeah, thank you for that Josh. Just curious on the battleground healthcare, even though it says battleground in the title, we all know that it serves much larger geographical print than that. Is there any, I think there'd be any use in us reaching out to some other local cities to maybe get letters of support?
I think that'd be a great idea. Annika came on mute there too, I think.
I was just gonna say, yeah, that's a great idea.
Is that something that, what's the best way to go about doing that? From you guys or from us, or how, how would you like?
I think we can talk with Ms. Erdman about that. I think it should be pretty easy. We have contacts obviously with several other jurisdictions and between the between, you know, we've got time on that too.
We can, we can take the lead on that from a staff standpoint and reach out to the other jurisdictions.
One, one more, Mr. Weiss.
It's just a follow-up on that, that same one. Maybe get with battleground healthcare first and find out where, where these other cities are. Because we can go to Ridgefield or we could go, but they may not, they may not know anything about battleground healthcare.
Yeah, she had some information about where most of their patients are coming from, so we'll, we'll get some of that information to reach out to the cities that would make the biggest impact.
Okay, Mr. Weiss, we're back with you.
Okay. So in terms of moving forward, we're hoping that you'll approve this tonight. We, uh, next steps, we have our dinner with our delegation coming up next week. We're excited to see many of you there. As I mentioned before, we've talked with most, if not all of the delegation actually, about a number of these items, so there won't be anything surprising, too surprising here for them. We're feeling good support for the delegation, from the delegation I should say. Legislative session starts on January 8th, which is really just around the corner. And so we'll be working, you know, assuming this all gets approved, we'll be working. In fact, I think Annika probably is already working with staff to get capital budget forms prepared, so that we're, have them submitted to our legislators by late January when they're due. And then, you know, we really would welcome and look forward to, to staff or council members wanna come up during legislative session. As I mentioned before, it's gonna go really quick. But we can certainly support and encourage you to come up and talk with the delegation partway through session and meet about that. So, those I would just say are next steps from our perspective. Annika, did I miss anything or do you wanna add anything?
Nope, I think that's exactly right.
So I think that's it. Happy to answer any other questions.
Is there anything from the Legislative Committee?
So, Josh talked about us going up. And we have an opportunity as a council on January 24th and 25th in City Action Days in Olympia. And I know that we have that budgeted for council, so I would like to put that out to council. I think this is an important thing that you should be at. It's a two-day event in Olympia. You get some training from AWC. But it also gives you the opportunity to go up on the hill and see how, how much work goes into this and what Josh and Annika are doing for us there. But also what it takes to, to get some of these things through.
What date is that again?
January 24th and 25th this year.
The, the reason I ask is, as always, the hotel. Phil, I don't know if that's, have you seen on the site if, if the hotel's open for that?
I haven't, but I'll check tomorrow morning. And we can start making some reservations.
Ask now, of the, of the five, six of you, who's interested in going? So that if you are, we can make reservations. Otherwise, the, the meeting is held in one hotel and your reservation is 10 or 12 blocks away. It, it makes for not the most comfortable of going. It's, who's interested? Again, the day's 24th and 25th, 24th and 25th. Who's interested in going? Mr. McCoy? Mr. Ferrer? Mr. Bowman? I have to think about it.
I don't know if I give it off.
Have to think about it. Ms. Davis? Ms. Davis? So we'll, we'll go ahead and make reservations for four.
They're due Adrian too.
Will, we'll go ahead and, and put Mr. Cortez on there as well.
There we go.
And then, it looks like Mr. Overholzer's in the back. So, it, it let, let, if, if the hotel's open, just please go ahead and make reservations for, for everyone.
Will do.
Yeah. Yeah, that's no big deal. Anything else from you two? Saying nothing, Mr. Ferrer?
Um, yes, I have a question. I was looking at, so it's at the bottom, it says we support AWC's 2024 legislative priorities. So I'm just wanting to confirm or get some clarity on what those priorities are. Are they just the ones that were given up above for the battleground priorities? Or the ones that are on the AWC's website?
Those are the ones that are on the AWC website.
Okay.
Is it possible to find them right quick?
I'm gonna see if I can Google it real fast.
WasCities.org.
We may have it too.
Got it.
You've got it?
I've got it.
Okay. Let's wait for a moment and have it pop up.
And Josh, maybe you can answer this too as a follow-up to that. I know in, in times past, we have not supported all the priorities. And then often you will query the council and maybe we will give testimony contrary to those priorities. So, am I remembering correctly? I'm thinking of police pursuit for one.
Yes, that's right. And just so, I mean, maybe this is reassuring for council. There will be individual bills and variety of bill, you know, maybe more than one bill on each of these topics. We would never take a position on the city's behalf on any of the specific bills, simply because you have support for the agenda on the bottom of the document. We would ask you about each one of these separately. And, and that is the case with any bills coming forward. You know, that we don't anticipate that you haven't already given us direction on.
We roll it. If there's anything underneath.
That was, that's it.
That's it.
Even, AWC's priorities are usually pretty much general for all the cities. They're, they're all things that, that they don't get off into the weeds very often because they're supporting 281 cities, so. But they can.
Anything else, man? Nope, okie doke. Anyone else? Is there a motion to accept the agenda as presented? Thank you sir. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you sir. Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none as well, moving on. Uh, thank you, Ms. Weiss, Mr. Weiss, Ms. Vaughn, thank you very much for coming. We'll see you soon.
Mr. Mayor, if I might, just to point a privilege, it's been five years now working with you. Very much wanna say it's been a pleasure. I think this is the first time that you have not asked me when I've been in front of you about whether the city's a giving or ascending city.
Well, that, that was on my note here, and I did let that slide, but since you brought it up. Do, do you see us as a giver or a taker in the 281 cities of, that make up the state?
I, I think I would say that the formula has started to bend in your favor in the last five years.
So we're no longer the bridesmaid?
I'm not feeling like you're the bridesmaid.
Okay.
Well, it's been great working with you. Thank you Mayor.
Thank you, thank you sir. That's very kind of you. We'll, we'll see you Friday and then we'll see you next week as well.
Sounds great, looking forward to it.
Pleasure. Moving on, the automated traffic safety systems. Some time ago, couple months ago, we asked Mr. Ferrer to, to look into this. We asked him last meeting to come back on this when, with the information came forward that our school zones were being, what's the proper term? Maltreated by our residents. And so, we're, we brought him back with the, the new information he has and then to see if the council has any interest in, uh, school zone cameras and the like. Mr. Ferrer?
Uh, I don't think I need to give a presentation now. I think you pretty much said everything. This item was presented to the city council three times this fall, September, October, November. The focus of those presentations was covering a variety of what they call automated traffic camera systems or ATS systems. Those are red light cameras, speed zone cameras. We also presented on automated license plate reader cameras or LPR cameras. As previously mentioned, the city council, RCW does authorize cities and counties to use ATS cameras in limited situations and circumstances. For example, cameras are permitted to be placed in certain areas, including multi-arterial intersections, railroad crossings, school speed zones, school walk areas, public park schools, uh, public park speed zones and/or hospital speed zones. RCW, interestingly enough, does not have the same limitations on LPR cameras. It has to do a little bit with what the cameras are used for. ATS cameras tend to be more about enforcement. LPR cameras tend to be more about investigation. A crime has occurred after and they're looking at it after the fact. During the prior meetings, council's focus, we'll say, tended to be more on speed zone cameras, as the mayor mentioned. Staff was directed to collect data on speed in certain school zone areas. That data was provided at the council at your last meeting on the 20th of November. City council asked staff to agendize this matter for further discussion, potential policy direction to staff. In the event the city council does wish to move forward with a camera system. Staff would need time to prepare a guidance, or we first off, got to get guidance in the city council on specific focus areas. For example, speed zone cameras or red light cameras, specific areas you wanna focus on. We need to talk to solicit bids from vendors for that purpose. We'd also need time to prepare an ordinance for a city council consideration if that's your direction. That pretty much concludes our report. Aaron, unless you have something you wanna add on to it?
Uh, the only thing I'd like to add is since we have the, the data that Mr. Herzig presented at the last meeting regarding the school zone emphasis. PD has decided to focus those, their school zone emphasis on the areas with high speeding. So, they've been given the directive to focus on Northwest 20th and Northeast 239th Street. They started that on the 2nd of November. They're going to run that through the end of the year. And then we're gonna ask that Public Works throw the, the counters back out to see if in that two-month period, we've made any changes or any, had any effect with additional enforcement. So I just wanted to give you guys that information as you, and then I'll turn it over to you to make your decisions on the cameras.
There was no guidance on, on store?
No, we, we're trying to zero No, we, we're trying to zero in on a focus area, see if the enforcement makes a change um, with the.
And was the guidance given to the, to the effect of? Education or education with tuition?
The guidance was given with education with tuition and they were also given the directive to try and. Make four stops per hour, so we're trying to push additional stops so that we're constantly getting. Because our, our time window during that school zone emphasis is short, so we're trying to reach four stops per hour.
And at the last meeting, the, the guidance was given that at the next meeting on the eighteenth of December, there will be a uh.
Yeah, and this is a good majority of that plan, I just wanted to make sure you guys had that prior to be able to make your decision on the cameras.
The uh, the reason I asked for it to bring, to be brought back up last meeting was, was very simple. Uh, up until September, we haven't done school zone enforcement in years. And school zone enforcement in, in my uh, in my eye is, is incredibly important. I stand out there with the, the two ladies there on On Store. And they would just a vest and a flag step out into, into traffic. And they get berated, they get called bad names, they get the bird. It is incredible to me, I, I'm surprised that they, they've been there for years, I'm surprised they do it, to be honest with you, because i- it, it's a, it's just an, a thankless job. But. With six to seventeen year olds walking twice a day, I, I'm glad they're there. I would ask that we think about putting speed cameras up for when the cops aren't there. When uh, when things change down the line, uh, Silent Sam or whatever you want to call hit, uh, the camera will be there. And at seven thirty five in the morning, it cuts on, at nine o'clock it cuts off, and at two, two thirty it cuts on, at four o'clock it cuts off. I would suggest at that point that it also stay on just to catch, especially there on On Store for thirty five mile an hour zone, those that are doing fifty plus. Uh, since it's in the middle of a neighborhood. But uh, the cost on those, Mister Ferrer, roughly?
It varies, I saw some information from a city here in Washington that put a cameras, cameras in a few years ago and it was roughly a hundred and twenty thousand dollars per camera over a five year period.
So they don't come cheap by any stretch of the imagination. But uh, I, I am in favor of uh, bringing those, the other cameras, the L E R, L P R, license plate reader.
Yes.
Um, I'm not too sure that that's where we are in, in the sense that since we're off the interstate quite a bit. That kind of thing, I'm not sure there are a whole lot of. Uh, reasons for that, other than the fact that, who knows, we, we say that uh, Mister Hurst said, on average, how many cars go through the? The intersection here, would you say roughly every day?
Um, the last count for five oh three, five oh two was fifty two thousand.
A day?
Yeah.
Well, maybe, maybe the license plate reader might uh, come in handy on uh, on that uh, intersection as well. Mister McCoy, sir.
I just, uh, point of clarification, uh. You mentioned doing speed zone outside of school zone, but I noticed in that you don't mention an R C W, you just mentioned school zone speeds, does that? Uh, is, can that be applied to outside school zone times?
Uh, in other words, can you specify specific times of when you want it, times of the day?
Can you do it? All day?
All day.
You could, the cities that I've come across, they tend to tailor it to specific times of the day. Seven A M to nine A M, two P M to four P M, you have some discretion in terms of how you want to do it.
Just curious, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Just wanted you to mention that the, the cameras themselves are a hundred and twenty thousand per camera over a five year period. Um, I'm also wondering if there's any hidden costs that are involved, I know when reading it, you have to do an equity analysis. And then is there any, going to be any um, extra staff that's going to be hired on for this? And is there any other stuff like software, or is it because we own the cameras, we will?
Yeah.
Have software to go with those cameras?
First off, you don't own the cameras, you essentially lease cameras, you know, it's a, it's kind of like a rental. Um, R C W does require, as you mentioned, uh, Councilman Ferrer, that you have to do an equity study. That has less to do with the cost, the cameras and more to do with making sure that you are not creating a foreign policy which discriminates against one group of people. Um, I forget the last part of your question.
Did you, well, now that you mentioned that, did you do, have you done one yet?
We haven't done that yet because we haven't gone that far down the road.
So we might not even be able to do one, depending on what the outcome is, I'm sure we'll be able to, I'm just stating.
Yeah, you'd have to do that to be consistent with R C W, um, yeah.
Uh, the last question was staff, any staff that we need to be hired?
You wouldn't be hiring any additional staff.
Okay.
Existing people like myself.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, you would, someone at the police department would have to look at.
Yeah, the, the way that it works in terms of uh, once you. Once the camera detects somebody they think has broken the law, it has to be reviewed by a person, right? And so there'll be somebody at P D who would have to review those, so if you have a hundred, let's say a hundred for just sake of a round number. He or she's going to have to look at a hundred different instances, verify that there was actually a, a, a. Citable offense and then issue a, issue a citation.
And then they have to provide an annual report as well, so people and make it known to the public, right?
Yeah, what happens is uh, cities that have these programs, they have to specify the number of uh, sites in a particular area. Um, and they do that over, over a prolonged period of time, so it's, you do, you basically put on your website and it's there every single year, so you can publicly disclose.
And I forgot, what was the waiting period, I do apologize, sir, what was the waiting period before, we can't just put those up without notifying the public and giving them a warning, what was that?
Yeah, I think the conversation you and I had previously had to do with red light cameras and the, a, a. The experience that another city mentioned is their part of actually, uh, they had to have red light cameras at a intersection of two state highways.
Oh, no, not that one, sorry, I do apologize for cutting you off, that was the eighteen month, I know that we had talked about that, but no, I'm. I was reading it and it was saying there's an actual time that you have to notify, you know what I'm talking about, do you remember that number, was it like thirty?
A warning.
Oh, yeah, what you're, what you want to, don't want to do is have a situation where you institute a program where, and then it kind of hits, it hits people that have no idea what's going on. The other cities that I've come across, they have like a, I'll call it a grace period, uh, they, they start their pro, they set their program, they send out, um, if you break the law. They'll send you a citation that's basically, you don't pay it, it's like, hey, just a warning, you're in a school zone area, you can't be driving forty five or fifty and twenty five, that kind of thing. Um, but then once that period ends, let's say it's a one week, two week period, then you start issuing sites.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Um, I just want a clarification, if we're only looking at the school zone cameras now, or are we also still looking at the red light running?
That's a policy direction from the city council, um, I mentioned uh, speed zone cameras because it seems to be from the last meetings we've had, that seems to be the focus of city council. But if you want to look at red light cameras as well, you can.
I was interested in both of those, so.
I, I am as well. It, it is obvious after last meeting and, and if you weren't here last meeting, you can go back to YouTube and see. Uh. We had folks doing sixty nine in a school zone. We had roughly sixty or seventy percent of the people going through our school zones, well over twenty miles an hour. We're not in the business of breaking people's backs. But we're not in the business of, of running over school guards and or children, luckily, we've never had that problem, this is a way we can make sure that doesn't happen. Uh, so I'll, I'll ask uh, as we come down the line, uh, starting with Mister Ferrer, Mister Ferrer, are you interested in, in going into this any deeper?
In regards to more questions or?
Uh, as in going ahead and looking at schools at, at cameras and, and start thinking about putting them in?
I have some, I guess, cause, do we know, are we going to be like specifically just doing the two thirty ninth and twentieth, or do we want to try to? Look at those other areas of interest that you had, because I know we get three cameras correct, yes, for the city, which would be now, we're looking at one hundred and twenty times three, so.
Which?
Three sixty.
It was Moses Lake you looked at.
If, if I could, if I could restate what I said previously, R C W, basically, the way the law is written is you can give, we'll call it one freebie camera for your jurisdiction. And then for every ten thousand people you have in your community, you can have another camera, so Battleground has roughly twenty two thousand people, so that'd be one plus two, so you could have up to three. And you're right, if, if that hundred and twenty thousand dollars, and again, we'd have to bid that out, so. That number could be stale, it could be a little more, it could be a little less, just depends on once you get back on your bids, right? If you had three places, you get three cameras, you multiply whatever that is times three.
Well, I do have some concerns because I know I drive a lot in those areas, I'm sure we all do, and I know, um, and not that it's an excuse, but. Um, having conversations with the city manager about how we actually change the way that people. Um, are our citizens drive, that's a county road, and actually, even though it is a school zone, no children walk there because there's no sidewalks.
It's a city road.
Well, it's county on the other side is what I mean, so, and it looks like a county road, so I'm just wondering if there maybe in the future. We look into making that appear more of a city as well, so it would change the behaviors of our drivers out there if they're seeing. Cause, yeah, I don't know if that makes sense, but yeah, they see right now, it, you're coming from two thirty ninth is all country up until that very tiny little section. And uh, even today I was noticing, because I knew this was going to be a topic for discussion this evening, so I took very. I started paying attention more about the school zones and I noticed there isn't a lot of warnings as well, I mean. That's another concern, so just to throw down a hundred and twenty, I, and then again, I thought Wednesdays was a really weird time to look at the hours, because. Most parents don't even, I mean, unless you have a kid in school, they're not aware that Wednesdays are half schools, I mean. But um, going back to your slideshow, sorry, I'm a mental person, it did say that it is twenty five miles per hour, even when there's no school, which would be on twentieth. And also right there on the Parkway too, so. I don't know, because I know we're supposed to be speaking for the citizens as well, so we have the citizens who don't. Do we get to find any more information about whether the citizens, if this is something they're interested in, because I know off your report, it also.
Let me ask you this.
Okay.
Would you be interested in getting a ticket, Mister Johnson, for doing forty and a twenty?
Yeah.
I would say Mister Johnson would say no.
Well, this is true.
And so I, I'm not sure there is no. We are here. And I guess the question is, are you interested in moving forward with, with, with looking into this, there?
With looking into it, yes.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
So cost has been brought up a few times, do you still have the information on top of your head about the one city that, how much they made back?
Moses Lake.
Yeah, when, when they implemented the cameras.
Yes, I'm ahead, I don't know, um, and again, we're talking about two different types of cameras, Moses Lake tend to be more red, red light cameras.
Okay. Based on Moses Lake of what they had, they spent about five hundred and fifty thousand on the cameras that they had and they brought back in about a million, and so. They did net money that they then put back into their police department.
Oh. Mister McCoy?
Uh, I'm really interested to hear on what the enforcement's going, piece is going to do. I would much rather have our sworn officers. Uh, in this role instead of cameras, I, I have. Just an internal struggle with, with, with uh. I guess our inherent computer overlords. Um, but I, I am interested in looking further, but I'm, I'm, I'm hesitant um, to do much more than that at this point.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mister. Um. So I. I, I don't disagree with Mister McCoy, but the, the issue that I have is. I talked to a former officer from the city of Battleground. And asked him after last meeting, what he thought the percentage of people breaking the speed limit on two hundred and thirty ninth was. He's been gone for four years. He said ninety percent. It was ninety three. So that tells me that this is an issue, it's been an issue since he was here four years ago. It's still an issue, it will continue to be an issue. Um, I don't think, I don't think we have, um. I don't think we've done enough enforcement. Uh, Mark, on the, the slides that you did last week, were, were the numbers that you, or two weeks ago, were the numbers that you gave us only during school hours?
Yeah, so the, if you kind of remember the picture, the top piece that had the A D T and the eighty fifth percentile, that was for the entire day. And then on the bottom, I did both the A M and P M, and those only took into account the, what was occurring in that timeframe that the flashers were actually on.
Okay, so. We've had two thirty ninth at thirty five mile an hour. When they hit the city limits, correct, for.
It's been like about five years, five years ago, yeah.
So, so everybody that drives that road should know that just past ninety second. That little corner piece is not in the city, if I remember right, then it hits thirty five mile an hour. Nowhere does it say sixty, nowhere does it say sixty three, sixty nine. That would be breaking the speed limit on any county road and everything but a freeway here. So. My issue is that because of lack of enforcement, people have just, just do whatever they want. We, we see it, we hear it, that's, that's the complaints that we hear and from, from citizens. Um, you can listen to it at night around here. And so that's the one thing the cameras will do, is those things work. Whether, whether we're out there or not, and my issue with it is, is. That we had roughly six, seven areas that needed them.
Yeah, so there's eight school zones.
Yeah.
And there were a couple that I think were perfectly fine, so it was like, and you had three or four that were really bad, and then two that were kind of middle of the road.
Because my, my. My issue is, is we can't enforce. All those school zones at the same time, we don't have, we don't have the officers to do it and, and we don't do it, period. And so. What this would allow us to do by having cameras, whether it be one, two, or three. Is it allows us to use those cameras in those zones, use police officers in the other ones. And, and so now we can go from three school zones to maybe six being enforced in a day. Or whatever that period of time is, so that's why I'm not opposed to them, I think, um. I, I would like to move forward with it, um. And look at what the studies are that we need to do, um. You know, look at, the, the cost doesn't concern me because obviously if you're recouping that in. In tickets is, it isn't going to matter, um. So, you know, I, I would like to move forward and look at it that way.
Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am.
I am interested in looking at the um, the school zone and the red light cameras, I feel like at giving P D more tools to do. To cover more area during times that they're not available and they could focus on more important things, not that speeding's not important, but you know. Um, life and safety sort of things, so I am in support of looking into this further, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, so when this first came up, I was against everything, um, and then the reports sir, came back the last time. And it showed some significant issues, um, my first. Question was to have our police department come out, that's my first line that I would like to go to, as Councilmember McCoy said. I am interested to hear the results of this report from November second on, um. I am against uh, the automated license plate readers and I'm not. Uh, very excited to hear about the red light cameras either, so I am interested in hearing more about the school zone. Areas, um, I agree that there are probably one or two areas that are a bigger problem than others, I don't want to. Um, make any decision on how many I want or anything, I, I am interested to hear the results. And more information on the school zone, but that's about the one I can give.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, then uh, uh, I, I'll make a, a motion that we uh, instruct the city to uh. Search out the cost of these school zone cameras. And what is necessary for us to meet the R C Ws, does that sound reasonable? Is there a second?
Sure.
Thank you, ma'am, any further questions? Yes, sir.
Is, is that where we're at, is that what you? You need Rob as far as, is that the next step that you need?
Yeah, I mean, I think from a staff perspective, we were looking for some direction from the city council, it sounds like if I can, if I can parrot it back, you. You need more information, you need us to find out in terms of costs and in terms of what we need to do to stay consistent with R C W, do I have that correct?
Yes, and, and the requirements that the camera companies require.
Okay.
And are we just looking at speed zone cameras, not red lights?
I think school zone cameras is where we currently agree mostly.
Okay.
Yes.
So I, I just got a quick question for Mister Ellis, if he's available.
Here he is.
Well, there we go. Thank you. So as we do, as we do these. These surveys that we're doing, Mister Ellis, and we get. these surveys that we're doing, Mr. Ellis, and we get numbers back, um, whether it be red light, speed, um, what, what liability do we have as a as a city then? When when we get these numbers back to to act on this kind of stuff, whether it be through enforcement or through cameras?
Well, it certainly does raise the risk level uh, when you receive back reports. The the more reports you have indicating that there could potentially be an issue and and you don't act on it, it does potentially raise liability issues that need to be addressed.
So so as we've went through this process, we haven't done anything with red light cameras yet, correct?
No.
There's, there's, it's just a study, right? I mean, we, all we have is data from crashes. We don't have and and I don't know how you would get e- except putting a camera up and not writing a ticket. I don't know how you would get that.
Um, you mean like runners?
Yeah.
Okay.
So so I don't know how we can get that compared to what we've gotten with the school zone enforcement, if you understand what I'm saying. So I think this like red light to what Ms. Davis said, um, red light's harder because how do we, how do we back up that data without having accidents and without having accidents where someone said, well, I ran the red light, which no one's going to admit, right? So I I don't know how 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 are the other cities doing that?
Well, I I can't speak for the cities. I'd imagine what you probably would do is you'd look to what you just said, is you'd look at the crash data over a period of time. And then if if the data indicates that potentially there is some kind of issue at a particular location, that gives some justification, some ground to stand upon if you make a policy decision that says we'd like to institute red light cameras at this intersection. Does that make sense?
Yeah, because because that's one of my concerns too, is is as we look at this council, we've been given data and we've been given data that says we have an issue. And so if we don't, if we don't act on that data, are we are we putting ourselves in a situation where it could could be uh, not not ourselves personally, but the city in a situation where where we're not, we're not acting on the data we received?
Let's not take one data point as a trend though.
No, but we 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 can, it's been this way for four years. So I I think it's, it's more than one data point here.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so I was going to ask, and Shane kind of mentioned, is there a way for us to have somebody out there? I mean, obviously they went build to cite everyone, but I mean, every time I'm at the intersection, at least one person runs a red light. So is there a way for an officer or somebody to stand up, sit there and calculate it?
So our, I know that our officers do um, scatter in other emphasis throughout the year. They've done red light camera emphasis. They've also done crosswalk emphasis. So those do happen periodically. It just doesn't happen on a regular basis due to staffing.
And we do have that data though, somewhere that we could apply for this.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And starting in January, the uh, the the traffic, we'll call them the traffic division, even though it's small division. Uh, their orders are.
So there will be an officer, there'll be two traffic officers. So that will be their their main. Uh, they won't be part of the minimum staffing. So their job while on shift will be for traffic emphasis. So we'll definitely be able to cover more ground and and be out there more often. As now we're kind of relying on emphasis only to get out there on a regular basis. So.
Yes, sir.
Uh, just just had a sidebar conversation, just question, um, when you come back with information, I'd be curious as far as moving locations. So say, for example, we put that camera at two hundred and thirty ninth. Uh, issue is miraculously rectified, could we then move that location or then based on the previous study? Or then do you have to do a whole nother study to move it?
Trying to remember, I read in the RCW, you, when you do your study, it's for an initial location. If you later decide to increase the number of cameras or move the camera, you have to do another study.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, sorry. Um. What was Shane just talking about? Did I just forget? I'm sorry. It was about, okay. So when you were talking about the officers, um, I assume this is going to take a while for us to do all of this and look into this. So are you able to come back to us after the officers that are assigned to um, enforcement have been in service for a while? So we can see what kind of, if they're helping change any behavior? Maybe they could.
Yeah, I mean, they're going to start in January where they made their shift bids. So we'll, we'll start implementing those two traffic officers.
This is going to take a lot longer than that, right? They won't. I assume it's going to take a while.
Mr. Ferrier, you, I would imagine it would be three to four months, probably uh, at the rate we work before cameras. If if the city, when you come back with the information that the cost is, yada, yada, yada. Uh, what, once the decision is made to move forward, it could be months.
Uh, yeah, I'm trying to think here. If if the city council's direction was to move forward with a program, establish a program, we'd have to put a a bid out to purchase the equipment, right? So that means an RFP, right? Potentially. Uh, and so that takes, that takes a little bit of time. While that's also happening, you could work on the, on a separate track of developing an ordinance, because RCW requires you to create your program through an ordinance. So that's going to take some time too. So it it's difficult from a staff perspective to say it's going to be seventy five days. It's going to be ninety days. It will take some time. And I I think from, from a policymaking perspective, that may be a good thing because that gives you time. I think it was Councilman Ferrer mentioned about reaching out to the community. The, all the other examples I've seen from other cities where the program has been successful, there has been uh, some outreach to the community. Um, because naturally you have folks who might have philosophical opposition to red light cameras or speed zone cameras for whatever reason. And it gives the city an opportunity to pitch their case, for lack of a better phrase.
Any other questions? So there is a motion, a second on the floor. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Anything else on that, Mr. Ferrier, before we move on?
Uh, no, sir, just uh, really quickly here to uh, Councilmember McCoy's point. I'm on the MRSC website right now. Uh, once, and it says, uh, once the initial cameras are installed, the jurisdiction must conduct an additional analysis before adding any new cameras or relocating existing cameras.
Okay, perfect.
And just to clarify too, I did misspeak. We will have one traffic officer starting in January. The second one will start directly after when our other one is off the FTO program. So that we're staffed up. So it will shortly follow.
Just to clarify. Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry to keep asking questions. Um, do you know anything about uh, what it would take to relocate the cameras? If there's a major cost involved in that, if that's something we're thinking about doing?
Probably depends what kind of camera do you have? Do you have it in, in built into the ground or do you have it mobile? It probably depends.
Okay, so they would, they are not.
I'm not the engineer here. I couldn't. I don't, I don't want to make things up on the, on the council.
I think the two questions that come to my mind are the power source and then the pole. Um, depending on the foundation needed for the pole and then, you know, are we solar powered? Are they uh, hardwired in? So that would be the two questions that I would have. And if it's solar and minor pole, yeah, you can pop them easy. You know, if it's huge foundation and has to be hardwired, that's going to take effort to move and cost. So it depends.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Moving on, uh, citizens communications. Uh, please limit your comment to three minutes. Council may not be able to respond to individual comments and may refer uh, you to a staff member to assist you down the line. We'll start with Mr. Inzega, please, sir. Pleasure to have you.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name's John Inzinga, and I live at twelve Northwest Nineteenth Street. When it comes to speed, write tickets, they'll slow down and start tomorrow morning. Don't wait three months. I think that's silly. Okay, I live really close to where these two young ladies that you're talking about and you know, that's a sixty mile an hour street. So that's number one. Number two, welcome. Thank you for being here. Mayor Johnson.
Yes, sir.
I know there's nothing going to happen when you retire, but I want to say thank you for your years of service.
Thank you, sir.
It's been a pleasure.
Very kind.
Listening to you and working with you on different avenues.
Very kind.
The, the main reason I'm here tonight is because of the Battleground Senior Citizens um, long term rental agreement. We have a couple of concern, concerns. The new rental agreement states the applicant is responsible for setup of the room and resetting the room to its prior setup. We have great concerns with this as the majority of our group's age is in the late seventies, eighties. Many are unable to assist setting up with these heavy tables or moving chairs. So that's really the problem. We, we do not want our senior citizens to do manual labor, okay? Does the city want the liability of that? You know, not just for the seniors, but even for other groups when they have to set up their own tables. What happens if somebody falls, gets a finger pinched, you know, trips, breaks an ankle doing that? What's your liability like? Along with the new rules came uh, increase in rental fees. We realize the cost of doing business and we accept those increases. But we do not feel it's right to have a setting up and tearing down furniture, which will take us more time. So that means we have to rent a room an hour earlier to set it up and keep it an hour later to take it down and put it back to where it was. And and I'm sure that every time it'll be different because different groups will have used it ahead of time. You know, other cities have budgets, budgets which include programs managed for seniors. In Battleground, that's not the case. We manage and organize all our own programs and we do it with senior citizen volunteers. We have, we also received this new contract, uh, yeah, I'll go there. We also, we only received this uh, new contract last Thursday on eleven thirty. And it is requested to be signed and returned to us by twelve eleven, which is before our next board meeting. This does not allow us time to do research, any options or find help for the newly required setup and teardowns. The group met today. The board did not approve signing this contract with the concerns that we have for the new rule of um, setup and teardown. The first quarter billing is due January fifth, but we cannot obtain board approval until their next board meeting. And I think that'll be the first Monday in January after the first. Also, as I was going through, uh, and I just got this late this afternoon, but as I was going through the um, the long term rental agreement, I noticed that the, there's an annual maintenance fee of three hundred and fifty dollars. And it's non-refundable. It seems to me that fee just, this year was fifty bucks. I'm not sure. So we, I just questioned all of these and would like you guys to think about it on behalf of the senior citizens. Uh, you know, we are all a bunch of older people. Some of us can handle tables, some of us can't. I would say most of us cannot. So that is really our prime concern. Like I said, I understand price increase, inflation and all this. But from fifty to three fifty for a maintenance fee, that's way over inflation. And for the seniors to have to set up and tear down, I think that's, that's a tough one. Thank you for your time.
Yes, sir. Pleasure as always. Ms. Urban, I I assume uh, in that, that that applies to everyone across the board. And has that been in the contract in the past, or is that a uh, just a new portion that came out this go around uh, bolded?
I believe that's been in the contracts in the past. And Kim, you can correct me if I'm wrong. Um, we have probably done a disservice and if we have the time with staffing, we have helped with setup and takedown. Uh, we, we're running low on that time now as we continue to book out the facilities and we have less staffing. So it's always been in the contract. It's not something new, but we have um, assisted from time to time.
I will, uh, i- if, if you'll be so kind as to send a copy of that to all of us so that we can look at the contract.
Sure.
Is that the standard contract sent out to uh, to the church that uses it? It's, it's our only contract that goes to those folks. And I, I understand. And Mr. Inzega, when you, when you mentioned the three fifty, of course, w- we understand that that, that's comes from you i- in December and then it comes back to you in March uh, from the reimbursement program. So yes, yeah.
All right. Thank you for that.
Yes. A- a- as well as the, the increase in the rental amount uh, is is paid by you in December and reimbursed to you in February, roughly.
Yeah, like I said, I, I was just given this, I haven't had time.
Not, not a worry, not a worry. I understand it. And uh, yes, ma'am.
So we adjusted our rate that we're.
Yes, everyone, yes, it got adjusted.
Do fund senior programs.
Yes, that's correct. So, so the issue is just the break, uh, the breakdown in the setup.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's our major concern.
Uh, if you'll send us a copy of the contract so we can look at it and try to sort it out.
Will do.
We'll, we'll, we'll talk about it and uh, think about it on the eighteenth.
And we need a little time to go after the next board meeting to address.
I think we can, we, 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 we all hope for a little more time. I think we can find a little more time.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
So on that, sorry, I pushed my button. Um, so on that, if if it like, why, why are we looking at the contract to see if it's in there for them to set up and tear down? I guess that's what I'd ask the council.
Well, I just want you to see the contract period that that we're signing with everybody that uses the center on a, on a uh,
Annual basis.
A- annual, thank you, a yearly basis.
Because, because, I mean, I think we should do something for setup and teardown tonight. You know, whether that be, I mean, we, we were there Saturday night and at the end of the, the function, Saturday night, there was a whole bunch of chairs and stuff, and I started stacking chairs as we were told not to. I was told we got people that do that. So, I mean.
Friday night.
Uh, Friday night for the, the tree, the tree lighting. You know, I was going to help stack chairs and move tables, and I was told, no, you don't need to do that. We got people that come in and do that. So why can't we have the same for, it's, it's once a month, right?
The difference is though, it's during the day when the, when the staff is limited. There's not the, the part-time folks that there are at night events and that kind of thing.
Do we have people that come in Monday morning?
So we staff events. So anything that's a rental outside of the long term rental group is staffed by um, the temporary staff. And they do the setup and takedown, and that's part of that rental fee. The long term rental groups are getting a discounted rate, and so therefore we don't staff all of those. Um, especially at the senior center in, if that's correct, we don't have staff there as they're moving in and out. They have access to that building under that long term agreement. That makes sense.
Well, it makes sense, but what's the solution? To let eighty year old people move tables, chairs?
That's what we'll have to.
That's, that's, I mean, that's what, I just want to know what the solution is. And and, I mean, I, I don't know. I don't, I don't go down there. I, I haven't been to one yet, even though I qualified to go now, I heard. But, you know, I, I just think that I, I just think that, you know, we need to, we need to have something in place for I mean, a church, they go in there, they'll have, you know, everyone grabs their chair after church and stacks it.
Yeah.
So, I mean, that's a different, different setup than than what this is, and it's once, once a month, right?
Once a month. Well, that, this is the senior center as well. I, I assume.
We have the same long term rental agreement for the senior center, the community center. They're the same agreement. So that maybe that's what we just, we need to look at, maybe changing, you know, one versus the other and and staffing one.
So the community center would be once a month.
Okay.
And the senior center is two or three times a week in, in some cases.
Yeah.
But do we, uh, we have other people renting the senior center, not just the seniors?
Yes. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Let, let's ponder this and and we'll talk about it on the eighteenth. We'll sort it out. Is there anyone else? Seeing no one rushing the podium, we'll uh, close uh, citizens communication and move on to the consent agenda. Does any council member believe that any uh, item needs to be withdrawn?
Move to approve.
Thank you, sir.
Second.
Thank you, sir. Uh, any questions? Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to verify on. It's an echo, so I feel like it. Um, on the consent agenda, I had a question or for the.
Need to have it removed so that.
Yes, okay.
Which, which item, which uh, would you?
E, please.
Okay, so the, the motion is that item E be removed and we'll move it just right after uh, we finish out this. Is there a second? Thank you. All in favor?
Mr. Mayor, this is the clerk. Is the first motion withdrawn, sir?
Oh, that's correct.
Yes, sir.
I don't, what are we talking about?
How to consent.
Mr. Bowman, do you withdraw your motion?
Will you withdraw your motion so we can remove item E? The count, the county climate?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. So that motion's been withdrawn. Uh, there is a motion on the floor to remove item E, and there is a second. Are there any other uh, items that anyone needs to uh, think needs to be removed? Hearing none. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none as well. Now, please, again.
Move to approve the consent agenda minus item E.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am. Thank you. That was Mr. Roche. Any questions about that? All in favor?
All right.
I, any opposed? Hearing none. Okay, Ms. Burr, we'll move on to you, item E.
Okay, I just have a question or just wanted to clarify. So right now with the climate planning inter local, uh, agreement, it's my understanding that we're just coming together As cities and the county to, um, make this, um, like to gather, cause we have a scope of work. We're supposed to be coming together and we're great agreeing to this by signing this agreement. That we understand that this is, um, Pract- by the GMA, right? In the, the eighteen eleven, that they've made these a change, uh, these changes to the Growth Management Act. And therefore we're just coming together to try to make this more affordable. Yes, this isn't just. My concern is, I just wanted to clarify that just because we're coming together as a group, because we're, we have a board and everything that's being developed. I just wanted to make sure that just because, are we going to be forced like? Cause I know each, as it is right now, you have the, the council gets two people on the board. And then each city gets one person on the board. And then we vote, well, counts, uh, county doesn't get a vote unless it's to break a tie. So my concern is, are we actually just doing this to, uh, for affordable pricing to gather the information that's needed To create our updated comprehensive plan? Or are we, does canvas get to vote on, oh, well, we think that battleground should be doing this? And we're gonna be doing this. And now we've just locked ourselves into an agreement that maybe we would have.
I can, I can speak to that.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, the, this is, these are things that, uh, all cities in the county will have to do. And it's limited to just the data collection part. So it's, um, measuring things like vehicle mi- miles traveled. Emissions, um, so there's specialized consultants will take these baseline measurements. And you're right, it was to do this for the purpose of an efficiency of scale. So it'd be cheaper for all of the jurisdictions that have to do this rather than Each one of us hiring a consultant to do this on our own. The city, uh, battleground is specifically gonna do, we're gonna do our own climate planning as a city as it relates to Policy work. So there's gonna be things we're doing that maybe canvas isn't doing and vice versa. And so we'll, yeah, absolutely battleground will have control in those areas. And I will be briefing you through that as we go through those steps.
Okay. Um, cause I, the other thing I saw was, um, I wrote notes, sorry, I went, forget this stuff down. Um, it was talking about getting a grant, right? So if we decide to get into this agreement, then we're able to receive a grant. Yes?
Yes, we have already received a grant and the grant funding is more than at least I, I I don't know how we're gonna use all this money that we've received today. Or was it? Five hundred thousand dollars.
Oh, wow.
From the count for the county.
Oh, that's for everybody.
Specifically to the city of battleground.
Oh.
But a half a million.
Yes. A lot of that's probably gonna go into actual project work, but, um, there's a lot of money coming from the state for this.
Here's an odd thought, maybe we just give some back if we don't use it. That's probably, probably the best thought that I can come up with, so.
It, it is reimbursement based, so we don't.
Oh, it's reimbursement based. Okay, cool.
If we don't spend it.
Perfect. Anything else?
Yeah.
I just, yes, sir.
Sam, if we were to not sign this inter local, we still have to make the same plan? That's right, we would then have to do this data collection on our own. And is there anything related to specific ordinances or changes that would happen to the data to life of the citizen as regards to this plan? So is it going to affect any behavior at all, or is this just data collection? This is just data collection. Yeah, so this is essentially a cost saving mechanism for data collection. Right. Thank you.
Yep. Ms. Ferrer, is there a, a motion then to accept this since you brought it up?
I will make a motion to accept it.
Item E, is there a second? Thank you, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
I.
Any opposed? Hearing none as well, moving on. Ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash eighteen, the twenty twenty-four budget presentation. Ms. Lowers.
Good evening, council. Before you, you do have our twenty twenty-four operating capital improvement budget. Tonight is our final public hearing. And then after the public hearing, council has the opportunity to discuss and or make a motion to adopt. Just as a reminder, we do need to adopt the budget before the end of the month in order to continue operating January first. So with that, we suggest opening the public hearing.
Thank you. Uh, I will open the public hearing. First I'll ask Ms. Leely, were, were there any electronic, uh, messages about this?
No, sir, none were received.
Thank you. I will open the public hearing for ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash eighteen, the twenty twenty-four budget. Is there anyone that would like to speak on that this evening? Again, seeing no one, we'll close the, uh, public hearing and we'll ask if the council has any questions. Are there any questions from the council? Not hearing none. Ms. Leely, if you read the ordinance by title, please.
An ordinance adopting the twenty twenty-four budget for the city of battleground, Washington, and providing for effective date thereof.
Thank you. We'll take a moment, wait for Mr. Bowman to come back and then we'll, uh, Call for a motion and, uh, and then above.
Did mention he's a senior citizen, so how, I mean.
We'll, we'll let that go by.
Well, it's fifty and older now, so. It's not senior. Don't get me discount.
Welcome back. Uh, I, I, I have, I had a little thought here while we're, uh, we're kind of waiting. Uh, with Mr. Cortez not here this evening, I might move that, uh, That we postpone this to the eighteenth of December to give, uh, him as well a chance on this. I understand that the business of the city goes on with or without you here, but in this case, the budget is an important document. And, uh, I, I would make a motion that we move this back to the eighteenth of December. We'll, uh, speak about it then when he's present. Is there a second for that? Thank you. Is there a discussion on that? Hearing no discussion. Ms. Leely, if you'll start with, uh, Ms. Ferrer and roll down the line.
Council member Davis. Council, or Deputy Mayor DeRozier.
Yeah.
Mayor Johnson.
Yes.
Council member Bowman.
Yes.
Council member McCoy.
No.
Council member Farrar.
Yes.
One, two, three, four. I assume five, one, five, five, one. Yes, thank you. Then we'll move that, make a note, please, Ms. Erman, and we'll move that to the eighteenth and, uh, uh, we'll send Mr. Cortez an email. On, uh, asking that he attends in these, on the eighteenth. Moving on to, uh, the policy discussion of concealed weapons and work from home. Uh, we'll start with you, Ms. Erman, and move from there.
Thank you, Mayor Johnson.
Yes, ma'am.
It's requested at the last meeting that we bring forward to look at the council or administrative policies for, um, concealed weapons, Which is under our city's workplace violence policy as well as our telecommuting policy. Um, in the staff report, I kinda outlined what we believe administrative policies are. Um, they're created by the city manager and city executives. These policies are set, are sets of rules and procedures and guidelines that govern the city's employees. A great example of administrative policies are the rules, policies and procedures outlined in a typical employee handbook or manual. Um, also in battleground, um, municipal code two point eight, two point one zero under city manager authority. It outlines that the city manager shall have the authority to adopt administrative policies and procedures for the effective and efficient use of resources to serve the public. I'm happy to answer any questions in that regard, but we also included in here The actual city workplace violence policy as well as a little bit of a background on how we got to this point, As well as the telecommuting, which came, was definitely, uh, born out of COVID. And then after the emergency declarations for that were removed, were, um, scaled back, uh, to a smaller scale for some individual employees. So, um, one question that staff thought would be helpful to start directing this conversation was just kinda asked, you know, The following, or kinda ha- start the discussion was what is the problem or issue with the policies, the way they're currently written? And has council received complaints or experienced a problem with either of these workplace policies? And I will turn it over to you all for a discussion.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. And, uh, we'll Start with you.
Are you, Ms. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
So yes, I have received complaints. So I don't, I don't disagree that, that there are policy decisions that, that you will make, um, with adopting administrative policies. Uh, was the, was the telecommute policy done by resolution?
No.
It wasn't.
The, well, I think it was included in our emergency declaration during COVID, but then it was not done.
And then, and then when we removed the emergency declaration, declaration, we did not do a, an additional resolution to allow The city to work from home.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. So the day to day operation of the city, th- this is what I see. If you have, um, if you have an employee that Has a child that's sick and they're not. And the employee comes to you and says, um, My child's sick. I need to get some work done, I can work from home. The city manager can make that call. And say, yeah, you can work from home. For Policy as far as being open. I think that the city should be open From Monday through Friday. That anybody that walks in off the street should be able to Contact Building. Planning. Public Works. Finance. And that, that doesn't, that doesn't mean just citizens. That could be any employee of the city. So I've heard We show up and go down to ask a question, they're not there. And so, um, I think COVID is over, we did this during COVID. I don't think we have lost any employees by not having this policy. Because we haven't hired any employees that this policy would affect really yet. And so I think that, um, The policy should be that the city is open from Eight to five, Monday through Friday. And that we're at work. You know, when, when Whether it be childcare or, or whatever it may be, um, our citizens make those arrangements. That's, that's one of the things, listening to the Portland, uh, school strike, the teacher strike, one of the things they, you know, what are the parents gonna do with their kids? So they have to figure that out. And, and I think that's the same for us, whether it be kids or work schedules that, that, that conflict that way. These jaw, the, these positions that, that we have, we're not hired with a work from home policy. Uh, that was done after COVID. And I think it's important that, uh, that we set an example and we be back to work. Most cities, um, I wouldn't say most cities, cities that I've talked to, uh, have the same type of policies. Uh, the discretion for them to work from home, uh, on a case by case basis would be left up to you. But the policy is That they come to work. On the concealed weapon side.
Let, let's do one and
Okay.
And see if there's any questions from there. Can I ask?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Are, are there any questions of, uh, Mr. Bowman at this point or the city about, about this?
Uh, and just to clarify too, uh, the, it is the intention that the city is open Monday through Friday, eight to five. And this policy is approved on a case by case basis. So it is not the intent that if you are in a position that we cannot provide customer service, that you would be allowed to continue with this. Um, we have also been pretty diligent in enforcing this. We've had employees that started off after COVID that were allowed to have a telecommuting work policy that's been taken away Because of performance issues or because we found that, you know, we were having lacking in customer service. So I just wanted to clarify that this isn't something that says we're not open or we're not here to serve you. Uh, the only way you can continue to telecommute is if you can fully do your job, um, and do that at times remotely. So I just wanna clarify that.
But if I came in on a Thursday and had a question for Somebody, uh, a depart, um, If I came in on a Thursday and had a question for one of our, uh, employees. And they telecommute. Would I be able to get that question answered then? Or would I have to get ahold of them or get ahold of you to get ahold of them to give me the question?
You would be able to get ahold of them by phone or email. Um, also, if you were to come in over the counter at any time, you may not get that employee if they're here on site Cause they may be in meetings or out in the field too. So, um, there's, I mean, technically it provides a little bit of a discretion. You may have to talk over the phone or make an appointment.
Are any of our employees at Public Works or PD using this?
Um, I believe we have a Public Works employee that works in the office. Have to go back and look at the list. What was the other one, Public Works and?
Or PD.
PD. No, we do not have any PD staff using it. Oh, we might have one.
So.
I don't think anymore.
That, that's When I, when I go back to When we go back to COVID. And, and when we had these, these, um, guidelines that were set by the, the governor and we followed those. And, um, we have people that were required to be at work. Uh, could not remote work. And I understand that, you know, we'll say, well, how's a police officer remote work? I don't know. You know, but, uh, they, they probably not very well is how they do it. But just because, um, just because They couldn't remote work and someone else could, I don't think is a good policy to continue. When, when you're, when you're looking at I look at it different ways. I, I look at it that like, okay, if, if I'm an employee that's not very happy that My department head or executive staff is being able to work from home. And I had to be here every single day and all through COVID and there's no accountability. There's accountability, but, but we can't guarantee it. We, we just know a computer's on and some work is being done. But, um, there's no accountability, then, then I ask, maybe I'll just sit in my car. Maybe I'll just drive around, maybe I won't get out. Maybe I'll do the things because I busted my butt all through this process. And I don't think is, I, I don't, I don't think it's right. And so it's different if we're, we're at work and everybody's here and everybody's seen, whether it be the public Or employees of the city than it is when, when you're at home. I don't know, you could, remote work could be anywhere. You could remote work from Hawaii, from the beach. That's, that's, Amazon's finding that out right now. There's a whole bunch of people crying because they don't wanna go back to work. Because Amazon said, we want you back in the office at least three days a week. There's also a component of when you're in the office, you're in the city. And You know, there's, there's an economic component to that. And so That, that's, that's why I think that, you know, it needs to be, we need to be back. Uh, it needs to be a policy that, that we are open for business and That the people get what they're paying for, at least can come in and see what they're paying for.
Yes, ma'am.
Is it typically salaried employees that would work from home? It seems like a lot of salary employees may flex their schedules, they're working over one day and not the next. And then given more time than they Eight to five.
It, it, it's a majority of salaried employees that are approved currently, there are some hourly employees. Yeah.
Do we have any, uh, salaried employees that are working more than forty hours a week?
Yeah.
How many of them, how many, I know you are.
I'm pretty sure most of these people sitting at this table are working more than forty hours a week.
So, so They're not on call. City manager's on call, she's our employee though, that's different. So this, this doesn't, this doesn't include her. Because that's with us. So this, this doesn't, this doesn't include her because that's with us. No, the, this, there's thirteen employees that work from home right now, not including the city manager. Because the city manager would have to get approval from us to work from home. And I don't know that we've ever gave that approval because she's our only employee.
Most of our salaried employees, I would say, work on average over forty hours a week because of meetings and um, you know, things that keep them over or bring them in early.
So are they getting flex time for that?
Sometimes, I mean, we we can be a little bit flexible here and there, but for the most part, that's not built into their schedule there, their salaried employee. They don't, it doesn't go on the books. I mean, I will give some exceptions here or there if they have an appointment or something that they need to leave early for, but they were here the night before, but for the most part, they are not doing flex time.
But flex time is, is your, you, you get, you get the ability to give flex time.
That's correct.
Yes, sir.
Of the remote work, what's the average hours per week? Or do you have any forty hour remote work?
No, we, our policy only allows up to two days a week and all of the people that are currently on that, except with the exception of one or two are one day. So eight hours.
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
Sometimes these things um are implemented for like reasonable accommodations for employees who may have a disability recognized by the ADA. I assume that that would be affected if there was any policy change that if there was a need for somebody to work from home, these were disabilities and they could perform their duties at home.
If we kept discretion of the city manager in there, we could definitely do approval on a case by case basis for situations like that.
Yes, ma'am. Anyone else? Do you want to continue on now with the?
Yeah.
And then we'll, we'll sum them up at the end.
Yep. So um, the concealed weapons permit. Um, this was a policy that was brought forth um this year. Um, it disqualified a candidate that we had for um for parking enforcement, which caused us to go almost, what, eleven months longer?
Yes.
To, to get a parking enforcement person and not a full time one, a part time one. Um, so when this was brought up, that this was the, the policy that that caused that parking enforcement person to not uh take a job with the city, I asked where the policy came from. Um, I understand an open carry policy, which in the state of Washington now is against the law for a meeting like this. Um, and I understand that the city does have the ability to um to say that you cannot have concealed weapons or open carry um in your, in your uh employee manual. Um, to me, it hasn't been an issue. It's been something that was brought up uh this year and this year only and was changed. And I think that um personally, I think our employees, if they have a concealed weapons permit, should be allowed to carry if they would like to. Um, I know some people think that uh it it may be a concern because some people don't uh don't necessarily like that. But um, it should be a concern if I'm just sitting here because you wouldn't know. And so our employees should be able to, in my opinion, conceal carry. It it did cost us the parking enforcement person, which by um RCW uh being a former police officer is allowed to conceal carry um without a concealed weapons permit because he was a former police officer, she was. And our policy uh killed that. So um, I, I would like to make it so that if, if people so choose, they can conceal carry. Um, but leave up to the city manager in the employee handbook or whatever, wherever they're gonna put it, what it would look like if they were caught open carrying. So if you have um a concealed weapons permit and you're carrying and you reach up to do something and your firearm shows, that's no longer concealed carry. And so allow the city manager to develop those policies and and what those would look like. But if people want to, that they can um conceal carry. This is um you know, I, I, I'm, I don't think that we should, we have people um that are out looking to be heroes and you know, stop every, stop crime and and do that kind of stuff. I think it's a protection thing, like we have some uh employees in the city that are more vulnerable than others. Um, when you're going to do a water meter shut off and someone doesn't necessarily like that, that could be um, a, a case or or giving a, a parking ticket to someone that doesn't think they should be. Um, and I'm not saying that it's, it, it's a, it's a opportunity just to uh show strength, it's an opportunity to protect yourself in case it gets carried away. We live in a community that has a lot of firearms. Um, you know, we, we're sitting here tonight and we don't have a police chief, we don't have anyone in this room that we know of that is here to protect us tonight. And so I think that's an opportunity for, for people to do that if they so choose. So I think that policy should be changed.
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so my question is, what would happen if a non sworn employee concealed carry?
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. So if a non sworn employee discharges their weapon while on duty, what happens? Is the city responsible for that? Currently, with the way the policy is written, they would be in violation of the city policy, which in my mind, and I, we have to double check with Mr. Ellis, but I believe the employee would be liable in that regard. Even if they're on duty, so once they, even if they were allowed to conceal carry. If they're allowed to conceal carry and that happens, then the city is definitely more liable for that. And that's my understanding from talking with WCIA, we did reach out to them. Um, they don't have, they don't take a stance against this or not, but they do recommend against having it just for the liability standpoint. And we'd have to look in a little bit differently, but if we are allowing that, then the city is taking on more of that liability. Okay, thank you, yeah.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir.
So when we're talking about liability, I think we get confused, uh, we, we, we tend to want to say this gun is gonna make us more liable. How many vehicles in the past year have ended up at the body shop?
Several.
Several. We have more liability every time one of our employees gets in a car and drives than we do with a firearm discharging itself. Have we ever had an issue with a firearm in the city?
Oh, I'm sorry, it wasn't accidental discharge, it was intentional. Like there was an incident and they fired their weapon.
Well, an intentional discharge is completely different.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I misspoke intentional, not.
That's, that's the way I was answering, that's what I thought.
What, accidental?
No, intentional.
Yeah, like if you intentionally, you had a situation with a person, they threaten your life and you shot at them while on duty or, yeah, how that would work.
Okay, but is it, is it any different? Is it any different than you driving one of our vehicles and hitting someone? Does the city still have liability?
Sure.
Yeah.
But I mean.
So a, a, any, any, any employee we have, we have liability. Anything we do, we have liability. We get up in the morning, we have liability. And so the, the problem is, is we want to take a gun and we want to think that the gun is the issue and that it's gonna create more liability, it's not gonna create any more liability to us than, than a vehicle than a vehicle would, that we're not paying attention and we run into somebody. So I, I mean, WCIA attorneys, everyone will look at it and say, well, we, we have liability. We, we have to accept that we have liability. That's that, everything we do, we have liability and in a policy, a policy isn't gonna change that. I mean, we, we've had policies that, that we, we've sat and and wrote checks for things that, that that had nothing to do with us, that, that we were right, but we wrote checks. So if something like that happens, WCIA will write a check just like they always do. The city will write a check just like they always do, just like if someone gets hit with a car, city will write a check just like they always do.
I mean, you're, I get all that, but then you're adding more.